With the, uh, with the specifications and the contract documents, um, and, uh, again, it's my recommendation that you award the project to Landmark Structures in the total amount of one million, three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars.
And it's a good company, right?
It is, they're, you know, they're, they do tanks like-
And what's gonna be the length of the job?
What's that?
The length of the job?
We've given them four months.
Four months, cool.
And, once we pick them, how long before they get started?
Um, there's a bit of a process that we, uh, that we discussed with H2O, which is the FEMA consultant, uh, because we're gonna, because we're recommending you award the, the composite tank, we're gonna have to take this to FEMA and they're gonna have to approve an improved project, and so it's gonna have to go through their approval process, and we're hoping within thirty days is what, is what H2O, the consultant, has told us.
That's 'cause we're paying the difference, right?
The difference, twenty-six thousand, the city would be responsible for, but that's certainly, we believe, worth it, so.
So, we are making a motion on this this evening?
Yes.
I wanna make a motion that we award the new water tower bid to Landmark for one million, three hundred sixty-six thousand, plus the additive twenty-six thousand. Second?
Composite water tower?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Yeah, a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Tell them to get to work.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to the public hearing, first public hearing on the two thousand eighteen tax year proposed property tax rate of zero point eight zero five one nine six, the second public hearing is scheduled for September nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Let me kick this off, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
And, um, then we can give you some information and the public, um, any members from the public who wanna comment, they'll have some information to work with if they so desire. Uh, as you indicated, uh, you made a recommendation, the council, as far as a rate, and that's what we're going with at this point, zero point eighty, to shorten it, zero point eighty. Uh, and, um, however, that's not the final decision, we have one more public hearing, as you pointed out, coming up on the nineteenth, and the final decision, however, is not until the twenty-fourth, that's when you vote on the budget, and that's when you vote on the rate also. But in this public hearing, wanna give you some of the reasons, uh, that the point eighty, zero point eighty was selected, some of the things you've heard before, some of what I'm about to say you've not heard, uh, and, uh, also we'll call on, um, Sandra, the Finance Director, uh, appropriate, when the appropriate time comes up, to add additional information. But, um, reasons, some of the issues that are impacting this budget, again, some of this you've heard already, some you have not, obviously, the overarching issue is Hurricane Harvey, uh, this is the first budget after Hurricane Harvey, destruction and damage to homes and apartments, causing the loss of property tax and the loss of residents, the loss of residents has created fewer funds, and this is an understatement, the way I'm stating it, fewer funds in the water sewer fund, damage to hotel motels, creating fewer hotel motel tax dollars, uh, this, um, in turn creates fewer tourists for us, Harvey has created the need to come up with match dollars for FEMA and grant match dollars, if it hadn't been for Harvey, we would not have the need for those match dollars, we do, we gotta pay for them somehow, a significant loss of city revenue from such sources as a civic center and aquatic center, we've lost a ton of money, uh, in those two, uh, sources, city sources, the Aransas Pass budget has been weak for several years, we're taking steps to rebuild it, our general fund balance should be at forty percent, um, for several years, been at twenty-five percent, we're entering FY nineteen just over twenty-five percent, of course, the final number depends on what rate you finally select, uh, by the end of this process on the twenty-fourth, that's better than recent years and going in the right direction, but still significantly below where we should be, for most cities, twenty-five percent is the bare minimum, but that's where we are, and, but we're building on that, at the same time, we've cut expenditures to the bone, so we're not only looking at the revenue, we're, we've been working on the expenditure side also, the city valuation provided by the appraisal district saw a citywide property tax valuation decrease, um, amounting to three point eighty-one percent, or six hundred and one, um, a million, one hundred nine thousand, down to five seventy-eight million, one hundred eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. We need a citywide renovation of deteriorating water and sewer lines, if you, whatever rate you select, a good portion, if not all of that, will be going to this very important task, and that's infrastructure, um, and, uh, we can't have bond issues, uh, for some of the minor work that needs to be done, that's where many of these dollars are going, would be going toward, a citywide, uh, would require a bond issue, we're not there, we're not ready to bring that to you, but I'm just pointing out what's gonna be needed at some point, the city's gonna have to do this at some point, um, and daily operational needs such as the recent water line break, there are no funds available, as I hinted at just a second ago, to cover such emergencies without taking it from something else, the recent water line break will cost between forty and sixty thousand dollars, in the past several days, people have come into office, um, and, uh, this week, as a matter of fact, and last week, uh, people are continuing to come into the office saying, "We want to build here, uh, and is there some way you can help us out with infrastructure or something of that sort?", they are the type of businesses we would like to have here, so if there is something, uh, that we can do to help that, we wanna at least look at that, you would have to make any final approval along that line. Also, the long unresolved environmental issues will not allow Con Brown to be developed until all three impacted areas are resolved, uh, this very high expense comes directly from our city budget, in the years past, we have given bonuses, a bonus was approved for the current budget, the current budget we are in now, however, in FY nineteen, there will not be any bonuses, instead, there's a scheduled, uh, there's scheduled to be a two percent cost of living, we talked about that in the earlier, in an earlier budget meeting, it can be difficult to predict the impact bonuses will have on a budget, but a COLA, we know more accurately, uh, where that, uh, number will fall, uh, the city's not had a COLA in many years, again, no bonuses in this coming fiscal year, as we have done in past years, including the current year, uh, we are, uh, suggesting a COLA, as we have, uh, mentioned in earlier meetings, and a very small one, a two percent one, by the way, uh, our capital budget for FY nineteen, very limited, uh, first, there are several public works related projects that, uh, can be completed using existing bond money, additionally, there will be minor capital items in IT, municipal court, the police department, and the fire department, and the building department, including do, a new code enforcement officer, and seventy-five thousand dollars for demolitions, we were up to a hundred thousand, uh, but had to bring that back, back down to seventy-five thousand in demolitions for budgetary reasons, uh, and, uh, and you have emphasized, and, um, you've made that quite clear to us, uh, that, uh, cleaning up the community is important to you, uh, so the code enforcement officer is in this particular budget, okay, the options we have, staff initially suggested that we stay with the effective rate of zero seventy-three, this is not a tax increase, uh, it's the effective rate, which means that it is the rate we need to maintain in order to stay where we are right now, understanding that, uh, whatever rate we deal with impacts people's lives, uh, and, uh, that has to be kept in mind, uh, but that seventy-three was the effective rate, it keeps everything as it is now, because of problems created by Harvey and the need to grow the community, the city voted for the property tax rate, this is at the last meeting, of zero point eighty, however, before they finalize the rate, before you finalize the rate, um, you wanna hear from the citizens, hence, one of the, tonight's the first of two public hearings, uh, to do that, the final vote, again, as I said earlier, on September twenty-fourth, remember, the minimum general fund balance for a city's twenty-five percent, if it's, say you decide seventy-three, zero point seventy-three, um, the general fund, uh, uh, balance will be twenty-five point forty-eight, the minimum is twenty-five, so we are just a millimeter, millis, whatever that is, over the minimum of twenty-five percent, if, uh, if, if you decide on zero point seven-seven, if, if that's approved, the general fund balance will be twenty-six point eighty-four, still just barely over, uh, if it's eighty, the top amount, uh, will be under thirty, uh, but twenty-eight point twenty-nine, remember, uh, we are being asked to have a general fund balance of forty percent, uh, we're not gonna get there, but if we show progress, that we're moving in that direction, that will avoid, in my opinion, a downgrade which has been threatened against us because of the need to have a stronger budget, if council approves the effective rate of zero point seventy-three, the cost to owner of a one hundred thousand dollar home is an additional forty-six dollars and fifty-four cents per year, if it's a two hundred thousand dollar home, double that, if the council approves zero point seventy-seven, the cost to the owner of a one hundred thousand dollar home is an additional eighty-six point, uh, eighty-six dollars and fifty-four cents per year, two hundred thousand dollar home, double that, if the council approves the highest amount of zero point eighty, the cost to the owner of a one hundred thousand dollar home is an additional one hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-four cents per year, all of these are per year, if it's a two hundred thousand dollar home, double that, so that gives you an idea of how, where we would stand on the various levels that, uh, that, uh, we've been talking about, and how, and the very important point of how people's, uh, pocket will be impacted at those various levels also, there are many other levels, going from seventy-three up to eighty, there are like ten to fifteen in there, but it goes from seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, and each one has two tier, uh, each of those numbers, uh, so, uh, that gives you an idea of how people will be impacted and how the budget will be impacted, also wanna let you know where those dollars are gonna be used, and why additional funding following a hurricane, following a hurricane, why it's so important, we're not the only city facing this, uh, all the cities, most of cities around us are facing the exact same issues that we are facing, but wanted to give you that background, mayor and council, uh, so that, um, uh, now that the public hearing is open, at least gives some foundation, some background from which to work as far as information to you and to the public, so that's all I have at this point, Sandra, anything you wanna add? Okay.
Yeah, come on up.
My name is Carol Salinas, I live on South Eleventh Street in Aransas Pass, and I've spoken before, I'm going to repeat, probably nothing new, but the seventy-three cents tax rate would not be a tax increase in revenue for the city, for someone whose home is valued at the same thing it was last year, right now, it will be an increase from eighty-nine cents to seventy-three cents, when you say it's not a tax increase, that is, that accurately would be, it's not an increase in tax revenue for the city, I understand that you have got to raise the taxes, I don't think there's anybody that can deny that, but we're asking, when you went to the eighty cents, the understanding at that meeting was that you would allow yourselves to go between the seventy-three cents and the eighty cents, and you could think about that in the interim, listen to public comments, I just wanna mention, not only, now, I, I mentioned before, I have not, I finally found one person whose appraised value went down, the state county appraisal rate value has gone down because we do have businesses that were destroyed, apartments destroyed, people are gone, houses are gone, but as far as the people of us who are still here, I finally found one person whose appraised value went down, that was an older woman in an older house, and her appraised value went down, one thousand dollars, even at seventy-three cents, her taxes will go up, we're going to have an increase in the city, we're going to have an increase, we will, I don't know how much, for the school, we might have an increase in the county tax rate, we probably will have at least a ten percent increase for windstorm Tuya, all of that added together does make a difference, I do have a question, when you say that at, uh, for a hundred thousand dollar home at eighty cents, the increase is an additional one hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-four cents, is that in addition to the forty-six dollars?
It's on top of what is there, what you're paying already, it's in addition to that?
So, that, when you said at seventy-three cents-
Am I correct on that, Sandra? Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
When it, when it's seventy-three cents, it would be an increase of forty-six dollars?
For a hundred thousand dollar home, that is correct, an additional forty-six dollars.
Right, but the hundred and sixteen dollars does include that forty-six dollars?
Yes.
There's been talk going around that, that has been confused, some people think that the hundred and sixteen is on top of the forty-six, okay, but I just, you know, and we are, I've had people say, "Why do you care?", I have reached that pinnacle barely, that my tax rate is frozen, but I do care for the young people, that we want to come in and to stay here, I spoke with one person last week, who said she is selling her house and going to move, she said, "I can go into a rental cheaper than I can pay the increased taxes for every entity and for the windstorm", so, you know, we need to, we want businesses to come in, we need to give them a break, but we need to consider these people that, the young ones, that want to live here with their families, their children, so, anyway, when you consider the rate that we know will go up, just please consider how much you're going to go up, thank you.
Anybody else? Close it.
So, again, the next meeting is the nineteenth, uh, but no decision until the twenty-fourth.
Seventeen.
No, the night-
Seventeen's a regular meeting.
The next public hearing is the nineteenth.
So, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-four?
You're gonna have back-to-back meetings.
Seventeen's a regular meeting.
It's a regular meeting, yes.
Yeah, all right.
And I'll be gone next week, I won't be here for either one.
Okay.
I'll be here, sorry.
Okay, I declare the public hearing closed on the two thousand eighteen tax year property proposed, proposed property tax rate of zero point eight zero five one nine six, the second public hearing is scheduled for September nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and now we're gonna go to discussion items, is proposed regional waterways issue, representative San Patricio Municipal Water District.
Let me start that one out also, Mr. Mayor and council, uh, there have been discussions, I know you're familiar with, uh, some aspects of this, maybe most of it, uh, there have been discussions with the San Pat Water District about the, about a regional sewer plant, and, uh, it's, uh, that would mean, we would eliminate, if it goes through, if it works out, eliminate all the small plants we have in this area, there'd be a savings for all these cities, in personnel, as far as, uh, money goes, uh, there will be a significant savings, that's something Fernando and I have been working on for several months now, uh, and, uh, and it is moving forward, we're gonna hear from a representative from the Water District in just a minute, um, it would, uh, it would be several years in the future, we're not gonna be, uh, not gonna put it, have rose-colored glasses on this, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, it's gonna be several years in the future, um, and, uh, when it does become a reality, as I indicated, it'll save personnel, save funds, um, involved in the discussions have been most of the cities in this immediate area, I would say virtually all the cities, uh, not virtually, all the cities, um, and, uh, that includes Portland, all the cities around here, and not Rockport, 'cause they're out of that particular area, um, in the next council meeting, you'll be asked to approve eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for our share of a study cost, the cost is based on city size, so, uh, the city paying the most is, um, is Portland, uh, and, uh, had a short meeting today, was talking with the city manager there at Portland, and thanked him for, they volunteered to, uh, to carry most of that load, and we appreciate that, that brought our cost down also, uh, we were at a higher figure, uh, so, um, uh, that's the overall picture of what's happening here, bottom line is, if it goes through, and that's a big if at this point, a lot of hurdles here, if it goes through, it will be a savings for all the people, all the cities concerned, I'm gonna ask Mallory Lights, is that, pronounced it correctly? Uh, she's gonna, uh, point out several aspects of this that you need to be aware of also.
Yes, mayor, council, thanks for having me, Mallory Lightsy, San Patricio Municipal Water District, uh, just to kinda give you a background a little bit, San Pat Water has been serving the area's water needs, industrial and municipal since nineteen fifty-one, um, since then, we've been authorized to perform some wastewater, uh, operations, we currently operate the effluent line from your wastewater treatment plant to Sherwin-Illumina properties, and, uh, so, that's where we at, where we are currently, but today, we obviously like to discuss the evaluation of potentially doing, regionalizing the wastewater treatment, so, almost identical to what we're doing for you on the drinking water side, but doing it on the wastewater side for all the municipalities, um, currently, we have done a very surface level study, we utilize Allen, Plummer &amp; Associates, the Water District did, and they came back, and the study concluded that it may make sense at this time to seriously consider regionalizing wastewater treatment, with the growth in our area and the industries coming in, the population density changing, and all these considered, uh, we really think it may make sense at this time to at least evaluate it further, and that's their, their recommendation here with this study, uh, the intent and the goal of this study is that you will have all the information you need to say yes or no, and, so, your obligation here is no, nothing further than, than this phase two of the study, and at which case you should have, that's what we're, our goal is to have all the information for all of our cities, including ourselves, to make this decision, yes or no, um, let's see, the, the city's total cost, so all, all the cities combined is thirty-five thousand dollars, like Mr. Edwards said, uh, Portland's already approved, there's over sixteen thousand of that thirty-five thousand dollars, um, and then the Water District's portion is just under twelve thousand dollars, uh, some of the benefits we see, or we believe we'll see is just the economies of scale, you know, you have four plants now that would be one, so, maintaining and operating and the TCQ discharge permit would be one, so we think that would be very helpful for, for our area, um, we plan to utilize your existing infrastructure to shave the peak flows off, so, if you know, and during rain events, things like that, you have the inflow and infiltration into your system, and causing, you know, peak flow rates sometimes thirty-four times what your average flow is, so we would use your system, somewhat of a storage facility, if you will, to hold that rainwater, and allow you to just send the regional plant that average flow, and that will allow us to size the lines, not, not have to over-design this regional plant to, to hold these peak flows, so I think we can save some money there by utilizing your existing infrastructure, um, the other thing is utilizing the Water District, you know, we have that, that structure in place, we are a nonprofit, uh, cost of service entity, so I think we all have the best for our cities, you know, at heart, and that's what we wanna do here in this study, is just to get all the information so we can make the best decision, we think, for our community, and that's where we are, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, I know our general manager, Brian Williams, he'll be here on Monday for you, so if I can't answer something, hopefully, he'll be here to, to handle that for you.
What's happening on Monday is the actual agreement for the, for the eighty-seven hundred dollars will come to you, you have to approve that, so.
Any idea of the location?
I'm sorry?
Any idea of the location yet?
Uh, we have some ideas, we're hoping that it'll be very close to where the water plant is currently, so, right there amongst the industries, that way we can, you know, resell this water to industries and, and get that credit back for your- for your billing, you know, with reuse. And obviously, that's a drought-free source of water, so we're very confident that they'll be interested in, in doing that. So staying close to the industries.
How many, how many towns are gonna be involved in that one district?
Yes, sir, it's Ingles, or excuse me, Ingleside, Ranses Pass, Portland, Gregory. Taft was evaluated, but they're just too far, it doesn't make sense for them at this time to, to build it. And they also have a pretty new plant, so I don't, just doesn't make sense for them, but those four cities.
No action tonight, but there will be action on Monday.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Now we go to adjourn the meeting?
No.
No, we don't. We have to postpone it.
Well, it's on the list.
It's okay. Gary Dunton, we were not ready for that.
It's okay.
No problem. I didn't miss it this time.
I make a motion we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't know why people are not showing up to these meetings.
Don't forget me this time, Randy.
Yes, sir, thank you.